I'd like to call the meeting to order. Roll call of Aldermen.
Mr. Heisler.
Here.
Mr. Kinsella.
Here.
Mrs. Halt.
Here.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Ridgewitz.
Here.
Mr. Randall.
Here.
Mr. Anthony. Mr. Davidson.
Here.
Mr. Sillsby.
Here.
Mr. Hayden.
Here.
Mr. Seibert.
Here.
Mr. White.
Here.
Mr. Galetti.
Here.
Mr. Musgrove.
Here.
Mr. Orlett.
Here.
Ms. Schneider.
Here.
Alderman Anthony is en route. He was coming from a meeting from Chicago and he should be here shortly. He told me he didn't think he'd be too late, but he called me about 4:30 and he thought he would be real close to seven, so we'll look forward to his arrival. Roll call of department heads.
Police Chief Bill Clay. Fire Chief Tom Poor. City Attorney Garrett Horner.
Here.
Ken Vaughn. Royce Carlisle.
Here.
Jamie Maitritt.
Here.
Tim Gregwitz.
Jim Schneider.
Here.
Leander Spearman. Emily Foltz. Chuck Schaefer. Bob Sabo.
Here.
Debbie Belleville.
Here.
Emily is excused. I can't remember, is Chuck coming? You hear for Chuck, Mike? Okay, I think he's still coming. But Mike Parks is here for the Street Department, note that. Ladies and gentlemen, if you would please join me and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, we begin tonight's meeting. We have no public hearing. Open public participation. I would ask that you raise your hand. Once you're called on, go to the microphone and that at that time you would keep your comments, give your name and address and keep your comments to about three minutes. Before I do that, just let me remind everybody, and there might be a few new faces, the disaster preparedness announcement. If we would have to leave the building for some unfortunate reasons pertaining to fire, carefully go out, basically the front door would be the closest, cross the street carefully and meet in front of the St. Clair County Courthouse big sign towards the circle up there. This would be a good place for us to all kind of get a head count and see if we recognize that everybody from this body is in a safe place. If we had severe storms or whether we had to go to the basement, go out this room, staff as the policeman will certainly point it, but the signs direct you to the steps going downstairs and it's the safe storm shelter area in the basement of City Hall. At this time, I will ask for anyone who'd like to speak possibly during public participation. Yes, sir?
Michael Hagberg, 701 Centerville Avenue. I'd like to thank the staff for actually meeting with me over issues with the website and to comment that our website has gone a lot, you know, from where it was a year, two years ago. Opening up more information to the public is always a good thing. And with that, I know that we'll be coming up on doing the annual treasures report and I would request that when that's posted on the website, it be done in a readable format. I understand that when they do it for publication, they squish everything together and it makes it very hard to read, but on the web, you can post it up and it doesn't take any extra space on the disk to have it in a nice readable format. The other part about posting this information is now the public does get to review the claims and I was wondering if you could explain the claims for $150,000 to Lindenwood University as to what that's for because I didn't think we had any agreements with them.
We've had an agreement with them since 2003, under Mayor Kern, when they first came to Belleville.
Is that an annual payment or?
It's an annual payment and for 20 years from 2003.
Okay, thank you.
That's been there in the budget and in the audit every year.
Atlanta, 318 South 29th Street, Belleville, Illinois. Just as I figured, Lindenwood wants $150,000 a year from Belleville, yet they want to take Belleville property without even paying for it. And they're building two dorms and you just mentioned storm shelters. They're building two dorms, brand-new dorms that are going to hold up to over 400 kids and there's no storm shelter whatsoever in them. There's no basement whatsoever, no storm shelters. And $12,000 for a new roof on the bicentennial park? I don't know there was anything that needed a new roof if they had a roof on it, it must not last very long because that park ain't all that old. And another $298,600 for some improvements at bicentennial park. An executive session, that's where all the criminality, if you ask me, goes on and the public is not invited to that. And did anyone ever make a study of a new police station versus the cost of remodeling bank building and cost of bank relocating? And also, I think Mark Kern, Mayor Eckert, the Aldermen and the County Board, I think, maybe I'm giving them too much credit, but I think these people are way too smart to do some of the dumb stuff they do. And I got a feeling somebody's calling the tunes, whether it's Boss Bragg, Bruce Cook, or maybe even Durbin and Springfield, but some of the, like, to pay a million dollars for a $150,000 park, there's a, somebody's getting one hell of a kickback off that, I got a feeling. There's something fishy going on. Thank you.
Anyone else this evening? Yes, ma'am.
Joyce Schreiber, 27 South 10th Street in Belleville. I just wanted to point out that at the last finance meeting when they passed the budget now to the City Council, it was pointed out that the bids came in for the library at $300,000 below what they were budgeting for. So I would highly recommend that that amount be rolled back into TIF 10 where it would be coming out of so that it can be used for other infrastructure. Thank you.
First of all, it wouldn't come out of TIF 10, ma'am. It's TIF 3 is where we had budgeted out of. But I think the library director last meeting, at that finance meeting, explained that they had what they planned to do in the library board's direction. Okay, at this time, if there's no more further, I will close public participation. We will move into the regular meeting. I have no presentations, recognitions, or announcements this evening. I do want to announce that Alderman Schneider had asked, and she spoke with the city attorney at my request, they're going to meet with staff and go through with you with all your questions and then if there's still desired presentation at the next meeting, we'll do it. It was just, I'm sorry.
The only one comment I would like to make is, and then we will have a discussion, is it was left that the only thing that these contracts do is sales tax abatement and that is wrong. That's why I wanted to have a discussion. There are things that...
Well, I think the staff and Mr. Horner, as he told you, would gladly meet with you.
Well, no, you left Eric go on about it last meeting and there should be more things brought in, that's why I wanted this, but I am willing to meet with the attorney.
Okay, all right, very good. Just wanted to make note of that. Okay, we move on to the regular minutes of the last meeting of the April 7th City Council meeting and the April 9th special meeting, joint meeting that we had at Fisher's. Do I hear a motion to accept and file?
Yes, Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion to accept and receive and file the April 7th Council meeting, April 7th, 2014 Council meeting and the April 9th, 2014 special joint meeting.
We have a motion by Alderman Heisler, second by Alderman Kinsella. Any additions or corrections? Yes, ma'am.
On the April 7th, page 4, the second paragraph, it's just a typo basically, it says "a moot issue" when it said "the amoot issue, M-O-O-T."
Yeah, actually Alderman Kinsella came in earlier and pointed that out, so thank you.
Okay, we will notice the moot. With that being said, we have a motion and a second to accept and file the minutes. All in favor of doing so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Claims payroll and dispersments. What's your pleasure?
Yes, Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion to pay the claims, payrolls, and dispersments.
Motion by Alderman Heisler, second by Alderman Schmidt. Do I hear any discussion on the claims, payrolls? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Halt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do we have a treasurer's report of city of Belleville funds and statement of cash and investments for March 2014? What's your pleasure? Go ahead, ma'am.
I move we accept and file the treasurer's report.
Motion by Alderman Schmidt to accept and file. Do I hear a second?
Second, Your Honor.
Second by Alderman Heisler. Do I hear any discussion? All in favor of accepting and filing the treasurer's report signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Oral reports, Alderman Heisler.
Yes, Your Honor. On behalf of the Master Suror Committee, I'd like to make the following motion to accept change order number five from Hair Plumbing for LTCP Phase Number Two that results in a $29,605.51 deduction in the overall cost of the project. So moved, Your Honor.
Motion by Alderman Heisler, second by Alderman Hayden. I want you to note that that's a deduction. We don't see that very often. Any discussion about that item? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Halt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Motion carries. At this time, I ask for a motion to accept and file the public building feasibility study as submitted by the Lawrence Group. Motion by Alderman Schmidt, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Seibert. Do I hear any discussion? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Halt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett.
Aye.
Schneider.
Motion carries. Alderman Sillsby, you want to start with the first item?
Your Honor, on behalf of the Finance Committee, I'd like to make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2014-2015 budget, so moved.
Motion by Alderman Sillsby, second by Alderman Seibert. Do I have discussion by Alderman Hayden?
Yes, Your Honor. I have a statement here that I would like to enter into the record. I'm sure will please my colleagues. Instead of reading all that, I'm going to summarize it.
Okay.
But basically, Your Honor, the wheel tax was created to basically offset a shortfall of cash flow from the state of Illinois and the aggregate of that, Your Honor, is basically been about $600,000. The wheel tax was replaced by the sales tax and basically over the last three years, we've taken in on an average of 1.2 million. So consequently, we've taken in nearly $4.3 million between these two taxes over the last five years. A year ago, this Finance Committee initially recommended to extend this sales tax and place an advisory referendum, Your Honor, on the November 2014 ballot. At that Finance Committee meeting, I'll remind you, Your Honor, that you voted for that. At the subsequent City Council meeting, the game plan was changed and basically the advisory referendum was thrown out the door. We extended the, instead of two to four years, and we told the public that we were going to apply for a grant, a cops grant, to put four more cops on the street, which there was a lot of public support for that because I will reiterate, as I've said before, crime is the number one issue in the city of Belleville and I believe, and I believe, the public believes and wants, that putting more police on the street is a way to deter that. Since then, it appears that we have lost some of that concern and objective that was extended and mentioned to the public. We did not get the cops grant, but in the same token, the situation of crime, the perception of crime, Your Honor, in the city, and the reality of crime in the city has not dissipated away and it affects our community in a negative way. I'm not, Your Honor, going to go into addressing what I believe is an eternal memo between the chief and yourself dated April 11th because I don't want to get involved with jeopardizing good faith collective bargaining negotiations with firefighters local 53. As a matter of fact, Your Honor, I'm not even sure if they have been officially notified as these plans would affect their operations. I do want to state for the record that I do defend Chief Clay and his staff. I believe that they are doing everything that they can to meet the public's needs and that was why the cops grant was applied for and this council voted for in the first As for the Finance Director's memo, I really want to state that I appreciate the public information that she provided and that it gave a more clearer picture to me, Your Honor, but I do want to state that the statement that it would be irresponsible to only look at this piece of revenue, meaning the quarter cent sales tax, and say we could afford multiple police officers, I don't believe, Your Honor, that's irresponsible at all because when that sales tax was created, it was created to replace the wheel tax and the wheel tax was created because we told the public that we had cash shortfall from the state of Illinois. Not $600,000 a year, every year, it's basically a cash shortfall. And in that time, we've taken in this money, Your Honor, and during that meeting, we gave the public perception that we're going to put more police on the streets. And what I'm hearing from the public, Your Honor, is if there's no cops, no tax. And I'll tell you, Your Honor, I confirm that. No cops, no tax because I will not be a part of what starts to be a presence of a public charade to the public of what we're actually doing with this money. Because if you read through the Finance Director's memo, it seems obvious that this money is being used for possible general operating procedures. It was stated it was going to be a temporary tax, but when government starts using taxes and gets used to using taxes, all of a sudden it becomes a permanent tax. I've looked at the cash reserves, thank you to the Finance Director again, since the end of fiscal year 2010, we had a balance of $1,233,000 basically. We've now have a projection at the end of this year of 3.5 million and this current proposed budget of at least 3.5 million and I would have to allude, Your Honor, that that is basically due to the surplus of the sales tax. With that in mind, Your Honor, I, again, in the name of what I believe the public sent me here to do, and that is public safety, I make a motion by ordinance and resolution to amend the proposed 2014-2015 fiscal year budget and reduce our projected reserves from $3,543,123 by 20, or 200, excuse me, by 200,000 and place in the budget two additional police officers on the street to fight crime and that is my motion to amend this proposed budget recommendation by the Finance Committee.
I will second that motion.
Motion by Alderman Hayden.
If we do this, Your Honor, we are meeting the obligation, in my opinion, and the pledge that we made to the public achieving four more cops. I want to state that if we don't do this, I feel that the public is going to feel that they are being deceived. I certainly support the projects in the budget from South 8th Street to South 1st Street, the reunion subdivision, Alderman Sillsby and myself can certainly be proud of the fact that our ward is being represented. I certainly support the things that we are doing to meet the pensions, the insurance needs of all of our good staff, and there's many great projects in there. But if we're not going to do our primary need of the public, which is protect and serve, then I can't support a budget that does not do what the people want.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second to amend the budget as stated by Alderman Hayden. Alderman Kinsella.
I have a question as to if we would do this, when can we hire officers if they're, you only can get them in the...
It depends on, if we would have somebody on the list who had all the training, you can hire sooner, but if they don't have the class, the one was due to the fact that we had, we felt comfortable, Jamie and I, to recommend that we could afford it with the sales tax that we have continued to extend. The other one, we hired, that is the first one from Crime Free Housing, we understand that's being funded by Crime Free Housing, but as was explained by both Jamie, the police chief, and myself, we would recommend waiting a little bit longer to make sure there's been a dip in revenue, revenues with the telecommunicator tax and the utility tax specifically. It has been, both of them have been down. The council did approve an audit by a company to help us look at the telecommunications tax. We, they're just getting started on that. We also have agreed that there's, and I've stated, there's a possibility of hiring another officer for crime-free in the fall. We're seriously looking at that, the chief and all of us. And we are committed, if there is another cops grant, which we, we could, the rumors are it could be coming, but we haven't applied yet, that we would then, it would help us make those determinations. However, we're not saying in six months, we're not going to agree that it's time to hire one or two more cops. But until we get some hard facts about the picture of the financial situation and until we get some hard figures on the police station requirements, which this chief has said repeatedly is the top priority of the police department, to get the facility up and going for safety, morale, management, be able to manage it more efficiently, get everybody in one building to be able to train in that site, for all the reasons he said repeatedly in the memo to you and to me, that this was something that needed to be his top priority. Now, we're just got on the agenda here in a few minutes, the motion that came back unanimously from Finance to hire the Lawrence Group tonight as the architect. It's going to take, as you heard him say last week, four to six months to put the total package together on the required improvements at 720 West Main and the City Hall building, which would make us ADA compliant, which we are not. To me, it only makes sense, and the Finance Director, whose education and experience has been, and she's given us good leadership in the Finance Department, I think all of you would agree, the budgets have been right on, the audits have been completely approved and acceptable and highly, really good comments from the auditors over the years. Her comment is too, that we should wait patiently until we see a clear forecast of the results of the architectures and the projected cost for the police department and City Hall. The chief also mentioned in his letter that he continues to research, not taking the action yet, but we continue to review and research several more programs that can make a staffing improvement to the police department without hiring any more particular staff. And that's just smart operating procedures. We also explained in that memo, and he and I had talked about it, that we have also done some other things that have freed up the police department's manpower, the new computer system that you all supported, which has a monthly cost to us, and also the CS, Community Resource Officers, which is very inexpensive really. However, those positions are doing a number of tasks that have freed up the policemen, which puts them on more time per patrol. We are taking this very seriously. We are still moving forward with the intent to hire some more cops, but as I said many times, it would be very sad to hire more cops and then turn around if the budget and the monies from telecommunications tax and utilities taxes don't level off or stabilize, they would continue to drop. Sales tax has been flat, to say the least. And if we don't see that pick up, I would sure then turn around, hate to turn around and then lay off policemen or firemen because that's our biggest ticket. 76 percent, Jamie, is that correct, in this general fund, is salaries? And how much is police and fire? Probably 60 percent?
Okay, the sources aren't on budget, they're about 58 percent.
Okay, about 58 percent is police and fire. It's a gigantic amount of the operating cost is just emergency services.
So Your Honor, so you're saying if we would have to ever be forced to lay off, the first place you're going to look to is police and fire?
Well, no, not the first place I'm going to look, but Mr. Hayden, if you remember, and I don't know if you were on the council yet, but you were, I'm sure, thinking about running, so I'm sure you paid close attention, in 2009, when we ended up, was it '10 we laid off, Jamie? 2010, the, all the financial downturn with the economy and with the recession, in that year's budget, we laid off a total, we, we had a total of 26 jobs that were not filled or were laid off. And we've got departments, as you heard, and you would have heard from some of these department heads who spoke up at the finance meeting and previous finance meetings, that they're extremely short. We're down to 15 people in the Street Department and we had 20 when I started as mayor.
But you can...
And I'm just saying, now, the police department's extremely important.
I understand.
But when you want your snow shoveled or you want the potholes filled and you want all the other services, the ditching done, or the drains cleaned out so your home doesn't flood during heavy rains, these departments are extremely important too. And so, it's a balancing act. Now, we're still interested in hiring policemen. We did hire four new firemen since I've been mayor and we did that for the sole reason, when we opened the firehouse, it was certainly much cheaper to staff it that way than to continue to pay the exorbitant amount of overtime we were paying before. We redid the contract on some of the staffing and we, the agreement, and we got the fourth firehouse open and it was cheaper to hire. And firehouse overtime actually has proven to go down since it was several hundred thousand dollars a year, several years ago. So we've made those adjustments and we've improved the safety of the fire department to the city.
But Your Honor, Your Honor, the point is, and again, it's not just the primary need of what the public is wanting, which is more cops on the street. We've got to go back and look at what we told the public. We told the public that we needed the wheel tax because of a shortfall from the state.
And...
And with the two years of the wheel tax, we took in $700,000, Your Honor. If we put that money in escrow, we could cover that state shortfall and say we didn't need it anymore.
But Mr. Hayden, what you're not, what you're not telling people...
Yes, I am.
Then we replaced it with the sales tax.
And now we're bringing in, now this year, you're saying we're down, but we bringing in 1.2 million over the last three years and the people are asking, where's that money going? Because we, we're not putting more police on the street as they presumed was going to happen.
You can see it, you can answer it very clearly where the money's going. You can answer it very clearly.
We never made it clear and evident to the public, Your Honor, that we were going to be using this for general operating procedures to make payroll and other projects.
No, if you remember correctly, you had a motion...
That's not the way it was presented.
You had a motion, Alderman Hayden, or somebody did. You were...
Is a motion made?
Hold it, hold it, I'm still speaking. Hold your hands. There was a motion to try to commit the sales tax...
Absolutely.
And that failed because Jamie recommended that that was not be a healthy thing to do. Now, what you're failing to recognize is, in this year's budget that's before you, while the budget only is going up less than 1 percent, every union is getting about a 2%, 2.5% raise. We have cut the budget, the department heads have done an excellent job in responding to our request of being frugal and trimming where they can, but almost everybody's getting a 2%, 2.5% raise and yet if it wouldn't be for that additional money in there, there'd be no raises. We would be laying off.
But Your Honor, it was never presented to me or this council that that's where this money was coming from.
It was never hidden.
It was never presented to us when we hired the additional staff.
I'm going to call on Jamie first to maybe answer some questions before we make it more convincing.
It was never presented that way, that that's what the sales tax is going for, sir.
No, that's true. That's not true.
That is true.
No.
Let me just say, I've always made it very clear that the wheel tax money, the sales tax money had to support general operating accounts or operating services because otherwise we would have had a $1.2 million surplus and the budget was never, ever presented that way. I just want to make one comment. You guys can obviously vote however you want, do whatever you want. I just want to make one comment about the proposed motion. If you're going to amend the proposed budget to add 200,000 in for salaries for new officers and like, I think the motion presented it as eating through the reserves instead of cutting other expenses. Our bond rating agency does not take very fondly to a budget that's presented in the negative, especially by that size of an amount, especially for something that's not[1760.75] not a one-time expenditure that you won't have the following years. And keep in mind, we're going to be going to that bond rating agency in the coming months to get financing for a new police station. So if we present a budget that's two hundred thousand in the red, they're going to ask me what that's for, and if I tell them salaries, they know that that's an ongoing expense, and they're not going to like that.
Hold it, hold it, hold it.
So, my only comment is, if you want to propose two new officers for two hundred thousand, fine, but I think the better way to go is to propose with that two hundred thousand dollars worth of cuts elsewhere to cover that.
Hold it. Alderman Holt had her hand up next.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, you did ask for cold hard facts. I believe my colleague presented to them, to you. He talked very much about when we passed the quarter percent sales tax increase. It very much was presented to the public as we would use it for cops. You answered him by talking about crime-free housing, the cops grant, utility tax, and telecommuter tax. You did not address the issue which he raised, which was, we told the public, if you give us more tax, you will get more cops. I understand completely that the police department needs to be upgraded. But frankly, Mr. Mayor, when John Q. Public calls the Belleville Police Department, they just want somebody to respond. They don't care if he's responding out of a sixty-year-old building that needs to be redone. They need help right then.
Well, let me just say this. If we're not diligent in fixing and modernizing this police department, you can, you can pretty well mark my words that we are going to be liable for ADA and other issues that we've been fortunate so far to avoid because of an inadequate facility that has grown and grown and, and has actually some dangerous things that are continuing. And you, during the last election, called me on it right here. How dare I let that police department, you told me in a meeting, be in the condition it's in? Now, the building that the chief's in, by your own admission, I believe, is, is next to being sharted deplorable. The jail's on the second floor with no, with no, and if you ask the men, the chief has talked to the men, the chief is our professional, and he has said right now, the most important thing is to improve this facility, more important than right now, adding the eighty-fifth officer at the moment. Now, that is the, the word of Chief Clay, who holds a master's degree in administration and has been a policeman for many years. And I think everybody's been very satisfied with his performance, and I certainly have, or I wouldn't reappoint him. So now we're going against what the police chief has, over the past several years, decided that what is best for his department is to try to get this new station up and running with, along with all the other things. We continue to investigate how to improve manpower, and we have hired some. Let me let Alderman Schneider speak before I go back to you.
Okay, I have two comments.
Would you use the microphone, please?
Oh, sorry. Um, I have two comments. One is on the quarter percent sales, sales tax. When this was reapproved last fall, uh, Alderman Hayden made a motion to earmark these extra projected funds into a separate account, which I seconded. And then there was more, uh, motions made, and this council voted every one of them down. They wouldn't even budge to let us have this extra sales tax put in a separate account so we could see where it was going in that. And as far as the police station, I'm not going to disagree that they don't need a new police station, but they don't need a five-star hotel for the prisoners. And I've said it, and I will keep saying it. We voted yes for that, to buy that building before the study was in, and that was wrong. We should have waited till the study came back. There were other things, when the money is tight, what you can do.
Okay.
And it just didn't happen. But when we had the motions made, this council wouldn't even budge to let us earmark the extra projected amount of the quarter percent sales tax to be put in a separate account, and it never happened. That goes to show right then and there that you knew which you were going to use the money for before it ever happened.
Okay, hang on one second. First of all, um, Mr. Clerk, I'd like to note that seven thirty-one, Alderman Anthony arrived, okay? Thank you. Um, Alderman Davis is next, but let me say this. Folks, we did not, we have taken this one year at a time and one budget at a time, as we've looked towards all the, I've made it clear a couple of years ago, that when we got the police, the fire department and five-ten West Main paid off, it was then my intention to move forward on doing the police station, that we had to take, you know, we had to get that loan paid off before we could look at the next hurdle. Now we're there. Jamie Maitre is both a CPA and has her MBA, and I would have to say that this council, I think, day in and day out realizes that she's extremely professional and has done an outstanding job of analyzing and keeping us out of trouble with auditors and all the other, uh, requirements that we must live up to when it comes to this budget and our bills, and, and we have not been in the red. There was a lot of cities during this, during this downturn of the recession that laid off policemen and firemen all around us. We never laid off any policemen or firemen. Unfortunately, it was a tough thing when I had to call people in the office and lay off some people, or, and not continue their jobs. That hurt. But we never laid off a policeman or fireman, and actually, we've hired some. But maybe we haven't hired the ones that a few of you believe that we, the number that we should have, but we are trying to explain that the police chief believes that this building is the top priority. We have done other things that you guys have voted on to spend money since that quarter percent sales tax, we voted to improve the computer system, which the chief told us has and would and has improved efficiency with the police department far as manpower usage. We did that, but that has a monthly expense, and it had an initial expense. We have done things that have improved efficiency of manpower at the request of the police chiefs and under the guidance of the finance director, and suddenly now, we want to, uh, go back and, and, and second guess their recommendations and the decisions we're make, we've made. But we've made them, and, and it's, it's time. Mr. Davidson, you're next.
I'd like to call for a previous question.
So we, we have.
I have a comment.
Okay, I'm, I'll let you have your comment.
Jamie, you can answer this. That when we were behind in getting state payments, we dipped into the reserves, and the money that came back from the sales tax at that point went back to build the reserves up to three million dollars. Is that correct? Second comment is, I'd like to know why this was not brought up at the finance committee during the last two meetings, and we're seeing it tonight. And the third comment is, why do some members of this body have Mr. Hayden's statement and the rest of us do not?
Well noted.
I don't have it. I don't have it.
I, I can answer that one.
Alderman White is next. Alderman White had his hand up, he's next, you've spoken.
Call for a previous question.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to give him one more time, Jim. I'm going to use my authority here just to give him a chance to speak on the budget, and then we, we are going to call for the question. Alderman White?
Yes, your honor, I'm, I'm not disagreeing in any way that Jamie Maitre or anybody else is, is not doing their jobs on, on, in presenting things to this, this, this body. What I'm saying is, we've discussed it many times, that we want to commit, we want to commit to more police officers, but there always seems to be a way that we're not doing it. When, when we brought up at, I believe it was October meeting, we wanted to earmark some funds to, to actually budget forward to, to, to get a police officer, council voted us down, we wanted, we, we probably asked for more than we probably should have. But my, my point in this whole thing is, if we don't do something, someday, we're going to sit around and be arguing this at the, at the end of every financial period, because it won't be in the budget, and we haven't projected it in the budget, and if we go into a negative part, we have the problem that Jamie just mentioned with our bond ratings. I just think we've got to reverse this thing, that sometime, we, we, we've got to take a more proactive attack at, at, at adding police officer, because that's what, that's what I heard when I was campaigning, and that's my personal.
But, but let's, let's be honest about the facts. The facts are, when I became mayor in, in two thousand four, we had eighty-one sworn officers, and then we dipped down to seventy-eight, and we were successful in getting the cops grant, and we got it back up to eighty-two. We currently have eighty-five. Now, I know you're going to say one of them's with the, because of crime-free, but regardless, we currently have eighty-five sworn officers. I'm sorry? Eighty-four, eighty-four, I'm sorry. The one this fall would make eighty-five. We currently have eighty-four. The police department, in the history of all its years, has never, ever had more than eighty-two. Okay? So we are, we have added policemen in the last, this council, all of you, have gone with our recommendations, and we have added cops. Now, I know it sounds great to say we want to hire a bunch more cops, but I've said before many times, it's about balance. You have to, we, we explained, and Jamie's explained, insurance is, you know, a pro, ongoing insurance. We've talked about the pensions, we've talked about the raises these gentlemen want. You were here earlier this year when we agreed with the, the, the change with the command staff and some of those expenses that we had when we, uh, dealt with that whole issue and avoided arbitration. You voted on all, I think that was unanimous. So don't tell me that we haven't been upfront or hit anything about where the money's going. It's been very clear how we've spent this money and where it's going. And a lot of the staff didn't get raises for two years in a row, uh, when some of the unions and even the one by arbitration granted a union, uh, granted a raise to the firemen, when other unions took a freeze. Our people have been very good about working with us through this recession, and we're just being a little bit more cautious, and as Jamie said in her memo, in six months, we might be a lot more in a position to say we can hire one or two more. But until, until the professional and, and the, the group that's advising her, such as some of the finance people, et cetera, that we work with, why would we want to take the risk only to turn around and be back into a difficult situation? I'll go to Mr. Hayden first and back over here.
Okay, first, first, your honor, I want to answer from my colleague, uh, Mr. Sillsby's question. First question that he asked, I was more than prepared to discuss issues at the finance committee, your honor, but, uh, there was concern that night, uh, in relation to some of the information and, and how it fit into our, uh, CBA negotiations, and it seemed agreed upon, and motioned to postpone to, uh, table that.
Believe me, Alderman Hayden, I would never jeopardize the union contracts, and my authority sitting here.
I'm not saying, I'm just telling you, I'm answering this question, your honor, why I didn't bring it up that night. Plus the fact I'm not on that committee, I can't make motions.
We asked all the Aldermen to be perhaps present at that meeting.
I understand that, but I can't make a motion in the finance committee meeting, because I'm not on that committee. Now, in relation to his question of, uh, why do some have, uh, this information, let me tell you, Mr. Sillsby, the only person that has this information right now is, the city clerk has the originals that I signed, Mr. Sillsby, because I signed them, gave them the originals to enter into the record, and because Mr. White has it, because I asked Mr. White to second it, because you need a second if you're going to make a motion. So to insinuate that I'm involved with some kind of collusion with others. Ms. Holt, have you got this memo?
No, and I must apologize to Alderman White, if he was supposed to second it. I agreed with you.
Did I discuss, did I discuss this with any of the?
The only thing I've discussed with you recently is Blues hockey.
Mr. Randall, did you get this memo? Did I discuss any of this with you? Mr. Gletty? Have you got this memo?
No, I didn't.
Have I discussed this with you?
Okay, we've.
Ms. Snyder?
No.
Okay, I, I just want to make sure, I just want to make sure the public knows. I want to make sure the public knows.
Point of order, your honor.
Alderman Hayden, would you conclude your remarks? And everybody else, ladies and gentlemen, we're becoming to lose our good character with just shouting out. Raise your hand, and I, hold it. I, I recognize you got the floor, but I'm making a point. We need to raise our hands and not just speak up on your own. Finish your comments.
I had the floor, I'm just, I'm defending myself on accusations that were made on the floor about me. There's no collusion going here. I want to go back to the statement made by, uh, Jamie. I, I'm confused as it relates to if we modify the budget, we're, we're, and, and we move two hundred dollars, two hundred thousand dollars from the projected end, that, that's not showing a, a negative. We're going to show a budget that's, that's balanced, uh, has a reserve of just two hundred thousand less. So I fail to understand her point in relation to, to showing it as a negative balance.
Can I let her answer your question?
Yes, I'll, I'll yield the floor for that.
The bond agencies look at just the year's budget, revenue in, expenses out. If that is in the red, then you're spending more than you're bringing in in that year. That's what they don't like, you're in the red for that year. They don't look at with that how much is in your reserves, unless, like I said, if you can explain, well, this is a one-time, the council agreed to buy some equipment, it's a one-time thing, you know, it won't go over again next year, they might look at that a little more kindly, because that's a salary and benefit expenses that'll go on forever. So seemingly, we could have that two hundred thousand dollars in the red for your budget forever. That's what they look at. They also look at our balance of reserves, and they told me every year that those reserves are still not at a point where a city of our size should be.
And quite honestly, they told us when we got our last bond rating, uh, that if we get the reserves back up, the bond rating most likely will go and improve. And, and we'll know, we won't know that until we go for the next bond rating, but.
And, and, your honor, I, I'm just going to state again, one more time. You know, the people sent me here because crime is the number one issue. They sent me here because they didn't like the wheel tax. They sent me here to fight for TIF reform and, and the way we do our budgeting, and the public is telling me, no cops, no tax. I think we need to listen to the people. I respect the chief, I respect, uh, Ms. Maitre and her education. I know what it takes to go through to get that education, trust me. But we, it's, it's government for the people, by the people, and they have the final say. And I'm stating again, I don't believe this council is addressing those concerns, and basically, if we did, your honor, I believe, and I am confirmed in my thinking, in my speaking, and in my heart, that we can change what is going on in this city and stop people from moving out, get people to move in, and that will increase our sales tax base, and in the long run, your honor, when we get rid of the perception and negativity that's facing the city, and if we don't see that, where we're at, living in, 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 in a city that, that borders high-crime cities, then we are being negligent in our duties. And in fact, one last thing, in, in relation to the motion, the final question, that, that has to be second, and that takes a two-thirds vote to put it into debate.
Ms. Schneider.
Yes, I'm, I'm going to say it again. I voted no for the increase of the sales tax when we got rid of the wheel tax. I voted for it again when the sunset clause came, and all we asked for was a little cooperation, is one of our words from the city, other Aldermen, um, to put this in an extra account. There would have been no problem to put this in an extra account, the same way, and it's in the record, I asked for when the gaming money came in, to be put into a separate account. That has not been done. And as far as Alderman Sillsby saying we all had these, um, memos from Joe Hayden, we didn't. It just goes to show when, and you were the one, Mayor Eckert, that sent my email that I sent to you to charter, and I was accused of going and sending it to charter. I never once received an apology for that, which I did not send it to charter, you did. So I'm tired of all of us being accused of doing things that we're not. It's not right.
Okay, we have a motion to amend the budget. A, I vote would be in favor of Mr. Hayden's, uh, um, request, and no vote would, would, would turn it down. So I will call for a roll call vote on Mr. Hayden's motion to amend the budget. Heissler.
No.
Kinsella.
No.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
No.
Ridgewitz.
No.
Randall.
No.
Anthony.
No.
Davidson.
No.
Sillsby.
No.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
No.
White.
Aye.
Gletty.
Aye.
Musgrove.
No.
Orlett.
No.
Schneider.
Aye.
The noes have it. What was the count?
Eleven to five.
Eleven to five, okay. At this time, let me go back. Did we, refresh me, uh, Mr. Cook, do we have a motion already?
Oh, we, we do, we have Sillsby, Seibert.
Sillsby and Seibert have made a motion to approve the budget. Mr. Hayden.
Yes, your honor, one more. And, uh, this goes back to the, uh, finance, uh, committee meeting recommendation, the recommendation that, uh, was voted on. Um, you know, again, people tell me, no cops, no tax. Uh, I've read the, uh, finance director's memo, um, it seems very clear and evident to me, the way that the city administration is operating, that, uh, we're becoming more and more dependent upon this money, money that was never, ever, in my opinion, projected to the public to be used for, uh, general operating procedures. So thus, is this going to be a temporary tax, or is it leading to a permanent tax? Which, which basically, you know, threatens the public's trust in, in what we're doing. So, uh, I want to go back to what was originally recommended out of the finance committee, and I motioned by ordinance and resolution to place an advisory, and I stress advisory referendum, on the ballot at the November twenty fourteen general election, to seek public feedback as if to the citizens of Belleville support the Home Rule Course and Sales Tax, a line item revenue stream in the proposed twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen fiscal year budget, and its temporary extension of three years based on a cops grant. A vote of yes or no will tell us where the public stands when this is government for the people, by the people. the people, by the people. This is what we should be doing. And this also will give us a better understanding of where the public stands as far as we plan future budgets, and that's my motion.
I second it.
We have a motion and a second to approve another amendment by Alderman Hayden, as he just explained. I will open up for comment. Alderman Kinsella.
It seems to me that Alderman Hayden is forgetting the fact that in America, majority rules. They're upset because 11 of us didn't agree with it.
Hold it, hold it. Hang on a second. He had the floor, and I don't think he's saying...
He's attacking other aldermen.
No, he's...
He's not addressing the issue.
He's making a point that 11 people just voted to not go along with a recommendation from Alderman Hayden. Now, let him continue, and don't disrupt this. This is not, that was not a vicious attack on anyone's character.
You have to remember that we have been elected, 11 of us happened to agree. And to do something like this, to my way of thinking, is bypassing our election. We're being unfair to our constituents by allowing somebody to manipulate us. We've been elected to do a job, let's do the job.
Well, and I'd like to comment one thing here. At the finance meeting, the public hearing last week, Mr. Hagberg and Mrs. Schreiber were the two only people from the public it came. They are here regularly, I think we all agree, they're at every meeting. But there was no one for the public. No one called my office or called Jamie from the public about any concerns about the quarter percent sales tax, about not hiring enough, and believe me, there's been a lot of articles in the paper recently about hiring cops, about the budget, about the general fund. We have had nothing. Alderman Hayden, none of those constituents that you speak of have showed up at any of the finance meetings, January, February, March, April, and they're not here tonight because no one spoke, hang on, I'll get you, no one spoke about these concerns except you. And a few of the aldermen now have agreed in your, with your opinion. I just say, we have to be, we have to be balanced and we have to be, we have to have a good balance handle on the budget so that we can continue to do everything we need to do. I have to get Alderman Schneider first. Alderman Schneider.
Maybe could it be, maybe could it be that not many citizens come and speak because they're afraid of retaliation? No. Now, wait a minute, don't, I have the floor, Alderman Kinsella. So don't stand there and laugh, or sit there and laugh.
I'm, but I don't...
And the next thing, it would be nice for the public to know, I don't know if the reporter can do it or not, put the comments that we made, why we voted, so our constituents will know why we voted the way we did.
Okay, Alderman White.
I'd like to speak to Alderman Hayden's recent motion. I'd like to point out that during the original debate on the quarter percent sales tax, the recommendation from the Finance Committee was that it would go before the non-finding referendum. So I think this has, I think it is important, we do verify what we're doing with the public it came, I think it's a good idea.
I understand what you're saying. But in this day, we are elected, in this day of the hype about taxes and fear about crime, I think you could easily make this a very tough thing and, and, and you could really, you know, I, I think we are responsible. We know this, you, you guys are here every month, monitoring this budget, making motions to, and, and we have never distorted anything. We have been good stewards. We have been hiring police. And I think we're trying, we're, we're becoming our own worst enemies, preaching about crime and fear, and also about the fact that, you know, right now, you've seen the public, the public, very few people show up to vote, and those who show up wouldn't vote for two nickels. They want all the services, but they're not going to vote to approve two extra nickels of tax. So I think we are responsible as stewards elected to, to, to make this. I mean, I just think we've got to be real careful trying to grow our city when, when this body here, some of us, are so busy talking about crime and almost fear, and, and, and I think the public is, you know, we don't need a council if we're going to take everything to the public for a vote. I, I think we have a council to make the tough decisions, and you guys have done well. But, but I think that these votes are something that we have to do, and I think we, you all know, you live this. And I'm just saying, when, when the wheel tax first came out, a lot of that was distorted for as what was happening, we had a pretty full council chambers. We've had to budget tonight, and we had the, the hearing last week, and no one is here to address these concerns. There's no public outcry. Like I've told you, I've not gotten one call in my office when there's a real hot issue, my phones ring off the hook.
I have one, just one question procedurally. Is, is this a motion to amend the, motion to approve the budget, or is this an independent motion to have an advisory referendum?
It's an independent motion to have an advisory referendum based on a budget line stream. That is itemized, Mr. Hunter, in the budget. So I'm calling into question, a public question on the floor, based on previous statements of, of how this tax got here, and based on recommendations in the past by the Finance Committee.
And, and the reason I ask is, my concern is that under Section 2.02(c) of the Open Meetings Act, it provides that any agenda required under this section shall set forth the general subject matter of any resolution or ordinance that will be the subject of final action at the meeting. So the concern I have is if it's an independent resolution or ordinance, I think as you said, moved by resolution or ordinance, then if it's not, the subject matter of it is not contained in the agenda, then you can't take a final action on it, even if it were, you know, if it were approved, it would have to be something that would have to be agended separately at, at a subsequent meeting. This is a, this is a rule that came into effect in January 1st of 2013 that now requires general subject matter of any resolution or ordinance to be on the agenda, so I just caution you to that extent. Thank you.
So you're saying we can only take it as an advisory motion tonight with intent to bring it back?
Well, you can't take final, I, I would recommend that you not take final action on an independent...
What if I removed the words ordinance and resolution?
Well, I think you have, you have to have an ordinance or a resolution to call for an advisory referendum because you have to frame the question. I mean, I would recommend that, that any referendum, whether it be advisory or it be binding, that it be done by resolution or ordinance in order to frame the question because you have to certify it to the county clerk for purposes of the ballot. But nothing would prevent you from bringing this at, at a subsequent meeting when it's, when it's an agended item, where just the subject matter of it needs to be on the agenda.
So can I ask that to be on the next agenda? Or what are you saying? You're saying we can't vote on this?
You just can't take a final, I, I would recommend that you not take final action on that tonight. Now subsequently, it's up to you how you bring it, bring it through the appropriate committee, whatever, you know, it's just the normal course. But since it's independent of the motion and the, I'm sorry, independent of the ordinance that's on the, that's on the agenda, then it, it should be by subject matter separately listed on the agenda. This is just a, a requirement that came into effect a little over a year ago, under the Open Meetings Act.
Then I'd like it to be on the next city council meeting.
And should we take it to Finance first? You've always been big about going to committees.
Just take it through its normal course, whatever, whatever you consider to be the normal course, if you wanted to recommend it through a, through a committee or, you know, ordinance and legal, it's, it, it needs to be framed. If you're going to pose a question to the public by way of a referendum, you need to frame the question.
I'd, I'd just assume, have it on the agenda and, and see what happens at the next meeting, and if we get that far, then we can always forward it to the appropriate committee. But I really do believe, Your Honor, that, that this, the Finance Committee, as, as far as I'm concerned, the Finance Committee, Your Honor, has already made their recommendation. They made their recommendation that we do an advisory vote on the public, and, and then it was modified by Ms. Schmidt.
And the Finance Committee this past Monday night made a unanimous decision to accept this budget as it's being presented tonight.
I understand that. But to, to, to get back to the statement, I certainly understand representative form of, of, of government and majority rules, but we're, again, getting back to the integrity of this tax, we're getting back to what was put out into the public as the way this tax was created. No, Your Honor, I, I'm not asking that we send everything to the people, but when we get to some important issues as it relates to, to taxes, and does the public really support this, you can't sit there and say, "Just because people are not here speaking," that that means nobody is concerned about that. I don't believe that, that's, that's a realistic perspective. And when it comes to these situations, just like we did with the gambling situation, I think allowing the public choice on these types of matters and getting their feedback i- is very, very good government.
Okay, so going back to Mr. Harner's recommendation...
I will pull the motion if, is guaranteed that it will be placed on the next agenda under Old Business.
I have no problem with that. It probably should go back to Finance first or the Ordinance Committee, because you're usually the stickler about going through committees. I mean, face it, isn't that true?
No, that's me.
Well, it's the two of you. But isn't that true? We normally, I mean, so would you, I don't care.
I understand that, Your Honor, but I, I don't have, it's my motion, it's my push, and I don't have, I, I can't even make a motion on the Finance Committee now that I'm no longer on it.
Well, I think you can request to have it on the Finance Committee agenda, and we'd honor that. I don't think that's a problem whatsoever.
Right now, I, I, the only thing I know that I can request is that I, I can, I'll pull the vote and, and be on this next city council agenda.
I will...
I'll be more than glad to entertain other things after that, but I, I want some assurance because it's not appropriate to, to ask other people to make motions or speak for you.
Okay, I, I will honor it by putting it on the next agenda here at the May meeting under Old Business. So are you rescinding your...
I will pull that motion at this time.
So Mr. Hayden is pulling his motion. Who seconded it?
I did.
Do you agree to, withdraw it tonight?
Yes, as long as it's on the agenda as you get it.
You just heard me, you just heard me. I gave my word, it'll be on there, okay? Alderman Galletti?
This is totally unrelated, but could you explain briefly the, what Ms. Schreiber was talking about with regard to the, the library and the work that was being done and how it came in over budget?
Under.
Well, it came in under budget. We had more money than was requested, correct? And I just want to know briefly the...
Yeah, Mr. Spearmine.
Yeah, come up to the microphone, Your Honor. It's, it's about the budget here, so we're getting ready to vote on the budget.
What she's referring to is there was roughly $900,000 budgeted for library renovations based on construction estimates. When the bids came in, they came in just shy of $600,000. So we have a surplus of about $300,000 under the budget. That's from a combination of a state grant, money from TIF III, which was necessary for the required match for the grant, so we could not give that money back to the city without relinquishing the grant, which means the entire project is dead.
Okay, yeah, okay. Very good, thank you.
I need that clarified a little bit. I understand you cannot give money back that was matching, but if there's still a $300,000 overage...
Well, their wish list was a lot bigger than what they originally...
Oh, I understand.
And, and what they're doing, they're going to...
Basically, we received a total of $250,000 from TIF III. Part of that was spent two years ago putting a new roof on West Branch prior to us receiving this grant. The remaining $219,000 was used as a match for the grant, which had to be put in a separate bank account earmarked specifically for this grant. Now, we do have an additional $128,000 from private donations, which was never part of the budget for construction, that was our contingency money. So if we were to give back the surplus from TIF III, we would basically, basically be giving up all renovations because we would no longer have the match required for the grant, which means we relinquished the grant.
How, how much was the grant? How much was the grant?
$592,000.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Any other questions on the budget? We have a, yes, ma'am.
We've talked about drug testing. It's been sent to one or two different departments. No reports have ever come back. No plans have ever been made. Are we just shuffling this under way?
No.
Is it in the budget?
Jim, we had a...
It's in the budget.
It's in the budget, right?
For...
We, we figured out, actually, the very, way, 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 way back, the very first time you requested it, the next day, we knew how much it was going to cost. We, we brought it to the mayor, and this budget, it's in there.
Okay, to cover, okay, I'm, I'm sorry, I did not see the report.
Should the council choose to go that way, it's in there.
All right, to cover staff, to cover elected officials?
Yes.
What, what was the scope?
To cover nine new staff and elected officials.
Okay.
Wouldn't, we, we said earlier it wouldn't take place because there was nothing in the budget last year, so it would have to be after May 1st, and now it's in the budget. And that question wasn't raised here in our finance, nobody asked that question, but it was in there. You know, it's, it's in the budget, okay? Alderman Schmidt.
I would like to ask a question. Do you have allegations that any member of the council needs to be drug tested? I think you could take it from Chief Clay, and they would investigate and...
I resent your tone, Alderman.
Okay, okay.
I'm sorry.
Okay, ladies, ladies, okay. Okay, once again, a lot of this, you know, I, okay, we're going to move on.
One, one quick question. The $12,000 bicentennial park building roof replacement, what is that?
It's not bicentennial, it's the shop, it's the, it's the shop at the roof on Laurel Heights Road, right?
The roof?
Yeah.
No, he's talking about the $12,000 that's in the proposed budget for the bicentennial of the roof.
What's it for, Jeb?
The storage building.
Oh, this is for the existing building that's there. That roof, you know, we kept the building, we, the, the block building that was still there from Anglers, we use it for storage.
The one they did the fish fries and that stuff?
No, it's, it's not, they never had the fish fries in that building, but it's that building that was, they used to put all their lawnmowers and stuff in it. We use it for all the, you know, we use it for storage. But the roof is very bad, so that is for a new roof there. We had put that off the last several years, and that's for a new roof because the building's worth saving. But if we don't put a roof on, pretty soon, we're going to have major damage. So that's what the, I couldn't think of what it was.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second to approve the budget for the fiscal year 2014 and 15. Roll call. Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Holt.
No.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
No.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Nope.
Galletti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlet.
Aye.
Schneider.
No.
Budget passes. Sixteen to four? No, I mean, four to fourteen, uh...
That's right.
Somebody got fourteen?
Twelve.
Twelve to four. My, twelve to four, sixteen, I'm thinking sixteen total. Okay, it got to be a long motion. Okay, we move on to, I'm asking for a motion to approve a low bid of $6,750 from Knip Roofing for the park shop roof.
So moved, Your Honor.
Motion by Alderman Sillsby, second by Alderman Schmidt. Discussion on that motion. Roll call. Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony. Kinsella.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Coletti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Motion carries. Alderman Sillsby.
Motion to approve the purchase of South Side playground equipment through U.S. Communities Purchasing Program for $118,591.96 to be paid through the South Side Park OSLAD Grant and TIF III. So moved.
Motion by Alderman Sillsby, second by Alderman Hayden, is that correct?
Correct.
We have a motion, we have a second to approve that request, uh, recommendation from the Finance Meeting. Any additions, corrections? Roll call.
That went to Finance?
Huh? It went to Finance.
This was in Finance?
Yeah, it was approved unanimously. Roll call. Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Coletti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion to approve the low bid from Century Service and Construction of $556,125 for library improvements. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Sillsby, second by Alderman Schmidt. Any discussion? Roll call. Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Coletti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion to approve the hiring of the Lawrence Group as architect for the police station City Hall renovation project. So moved.
Motion by Alderman Sillsby, second by Alderman Schmidt. Discussion? Roll call. Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Coletti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Motion carries. Alderman, Kinsella.
I make a motion that we approve, uh, a policy regarding the certification of eligibility for the exemption of sales tax on building materials and development agreements. So moved.
Motion by Alderman Sillsby, second by Alderman Anthony. Any discussion? Roll call. Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Coletti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Motion carries. Alderman Seibert.
Yes, Your Honor, I make a motion on behalf of the Streets and Streets Committee to approve alley vacation as part of high-rise drive between Lot 29 and Lot 30.
Motion by Alderman Seibert, second by Alderman Hayden. Any discussion on that motion? Do we have to have a public hearing on that? Do we have to, or do we, certification of an alley?
We do.
I don't think you know, okay, okay. Roll call. Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Coletti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Motion carries. Alderman Seibert.
Yes, Your Honor, I make a motion on behalf of the Streets and Streets Committee to approve alley vacation as part of high-rise drive between Lot 29 and Lot 30.
Motion by Alderman Seibert, second by Alderman Hayden. Any discussion on that motion? Do we have to have a public hearing on that? Do we have to, or do we, certification of an alley?
We do.
I don't think you know, okay, okay. Roll call. Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Coletti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Motion carries.
B, Resolution Number 3182, a resolution amending the annual budget of the city of Bellevue, Illinois for the fiscal year beginning on the first day of May 2013 and ending the 30th day of April 2014.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Alderman Sillsby, second by Alderman Schmidt. Any discussion on Resolution 3183?
I have a question.
Yes.
Does this constitute our end of the year, pay all the bills issue, or will we still have another?
We won't know until tomorrow. There could be some, there could be a reason to call a meeting yet. I'm not sure until we get through tonight.
Okay. As of right now, that's... Okay.
As of right now, it does, but there might be an issue or two of business we have to get done. We'll make a decision in the next, probably 24 hours or so.
Okay, thank you.
We have a motion and a second to approve this resolution as just read. Roll call. Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Coletti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.